Are you recording? There we go. Okay, we'll get started.
Say the pledge.
Thank you. All right, Jeff won't be with us this evening, but we still have a quorum, so we're good to go. On the agenda this evening, number ten is being removed. That's the only change I'm aware of. Anything else?
No, I will make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Can I get a second? Sarah does a second. All in favor, say aye. All right, motion carries. Consent agenda, any last minute mods, changes there? Jim? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Okay, Stephanie makes a motion. Can I get a second? All right, Sarah does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approval of the council minutes. If you see anything there that was off, I didn't. I'm gonna look for a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Sarah makes a motion. Can I get a second? Stephanie did a second. All right, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries. All right, public comment. Anybody got anything you want to chat about tonight? Sir, go right ahead.
Get way into this. First of all, what I'm gonna talk about is new owner tax, new owner tax.
For the purposes of recording, would you give us your name and address?
No. Yeah, Rock Star sixty-seven oh five seventy-six thousand four. And uh, I'm no longer an homeowner, I'm a renter. So I'm speaking to you as a disinterested person. Not uninterested, I'm interested in how Forest comes out. But I don't have anything riding on this either way. Everyone else we talked, you don't. I used to be against tax abatement myself. You're wondering why I wrote this all down, just so I don't take forty-five minutes. I used to be against myself until City Council, several years ago, we had a meeting and we over the numbers of how it worked. When a property hits the tax code, even with the abatement, they're still paying taxes. Beters still, they're paying special. There's no abatement of them. By stopping the abatement, you have set in motion actions, some of them immediate, some of those that may be two or more years old. You've probably had a grocery store and a gas station coming to town fairly soon. Count on those being pushed out. You have put developments at risk. Interest rates were already doing that. By putting developments at risk, you have put all the property owners of Forest at risk for the bond issue against all those properties. If those developments fail, what, because every, every owner, every property owner in Forest is on the hook for those bond issues. The other thing is Forest had really nice ratings on it, on its bonds. Let's hope it continues, but hope it's all of this. If they already eat away some of the damage caused by these tax abatements going away, five more months of studying the issue will most certainly eat away. I suggest either move to bring up the issue, come either place to see your basement back in place, but put it in place for four years. We'll call a special meeting and meet with onset foot until we see a blind blowing smoke. You have placed a bet on an abatement that costs you nothing in order to slow growth. You may achieve your goal and cost the people of Forest millions. Here's the last point, I really don't wanna, really particularly wanna bring up in public, but there are other developments in town. Future developments that continue their process by deannexation. And if they do that, you'll get, you'll get possible growth in those areas that you have zero control over. Thank you.
Thanks, Russ. Hey, anybody else got anything you want to talk about tonight? Go ahead.
Uh, Jay Post, uh, I just moved in July, under the second avenue in the back behind bigger, that's how I like to describe it. Uh, my question is, and my parents also just bought a place up the road here. Uh, we moved up from Florida, we both moved up from Florida. I have to be military, so there's a lot of places. Um, so one concern that I've noted since I moved in is the water, and I know you guys aren't overall responsible for the water, so I believe we did it from West Fargo and put it in our water tower, something wrong with those lines, correct? Um, no?
No.
Not yours.
Okay, so. Well, my concern is, we, we had to bring in somebody to, uh, look at selling water softening, the water is so hard and so bad. I've lived in a lot of places, every spam phone call you get about bad water, I lived in that place. Glen, Camp Lejeune, Camp Pendleton, Twenty-nine Palm, Hawaii, Hawaii maybe not so much, but um, and this is some of the worst water that we've seen as far as how hard it is, how bad it is. Uh, both my wife and I, I had to see their college, the water has changed, there's getting so much coming up from Florida. So I was wanting very future plan to actually make this so we can so we're not brute running through hot water heaters, but the heating element's gonna get caked with all the hard, uh, sediments and then we're gonna have to replace hot water heaters every two to three years. Um, from what, uh, I had a, an independent person coming out, come out and look at it. Cause we just moved in in July, we already have an issue about hot water heaters. So it isn't undercover of Lawrence, we were covered under Lawrence at the time, but at some point, not going to, that makes sense, so.
So currently what's going on is, um, some of the town is on the aquifer water and the other part of town is on caserole water. So, um, we're planning on switching everybody over to caserole water, hopefully this spring. Your water's still gonna be hard. It won't have all the other iron and some of the other things that the aquifer presents, so if you see that colored water, the orange colored water, that's coming from the aquifer. The, uh, other part, again, the, the caserole water, water is still hard. So that's gonna prevail, but the water quality is better, and I know that's not a hell of a lot to say, but I mean, it is better than what we're dragging out of the aquifer. So, um, basically it's gonna come down to whatever caserole water decides to do, as far as any softening or improvement on the water, we'll be probably at their whim on that.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
I just wanna say, I understand completely, cause I'm in the same boat as you. I don't know if other council members have the horse um, old water, but I also do, and I share those same frustrations with you, and I have been um, a really big um, talker on trying to get it accomplished, wanting to get it fixed, so I'm right there with you.
All right, yeah, my parents got a large office all day. So they're hopefully gonna have their problems.
It helps, cause I did the same thing, and we didn't have any more issues after that, so, but yes.
Yeah, well, actually, military, they end up wanting to drop, whatever I.
Understood.
Yeah, I would love to stick around when I get up to my son to wrestling, so.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate the comments. Anybody else have anything? Only one's going twice. Okay, we'll proceed on. I don't think we had a sheriff's update, I know it's just kind of a standing deal, we'll, uh, pick that up at the next meeting. Uh, who's picking up the Visto?
I get this one.
You got it, all right.
Um, we have a request before City Council tonight to, uh, rename a portion of Visto Industrial Drive or Industrial Drive in the Visto Industrial Edition. Do you guys all get that memo, guys?
Yeah.
So Jake gave a kind of a background pre-law on, um, the various additions that we've had in the Visto industrial area. And an issue that, um, arose with addressing, um, in this area, when Visto Industrial Edition, the first one was flatted, there was a front end road, and that's always called the front end road. And then when second edition was flatted, um, on the running piece, the last one, a hundred, so the, uh, Tyrrell fourteen, also just called, uh, front end road. So when the county went to the address, so they, um, kinda changed the name of those front end roads, and then called them Industrial Drive. So we have Brent, he goes to the map on he's just on page three. It's gonna be hard to see, but, uh, there's a front end road along Tyrrell seventeen right there, yeah, that is called Industrial Drive. Then, um, on the south side, going east to west, fortunately called Industrial Drive, and then Brent's gonna go up a little bit, so no. That is also Industrial Drive. We have an issue with, um, too many of the roads in there being called Industrial Drive. So E A D Holding, um, a developer requested that the north-south front end road along seventeen be renamed to, um, Irwin Drive. Is what they wanted to call it. And then, in the future, uh, Jake and I were talking, will also possibly after the name, the six hundred and seventy feet, uh, along Tyrrell fourteen, that guy uh, named Industrial Drive too. But before any changes are made, know that that change actually affects the property owners, um, because there's a business right here that uses the address, um, of Industrial Drive. We're gonna change that name, it's gonna affect their marketing, their business card, email, you know, everything else. But that's the only one that gets affected, these properties here are addressed off the Industrial Drive now, so they're fine, off of the track line, and then need to, um, this proposed change that's in here, needs our address off over here. Once this is changed, the whole property is affected too, if the council provides desire. Product force, you guys, I estimate the decision previously, when you guys have approved their name changes, it's a simple resolution to do it, particularly it doesn't affect any property owners. Or if it does, it's a residential property owner, and there's really not much that has to be changed, except for we, if one of them that paid, you have a new address now, here's what it is. This is a bigger deal, cause like I said, it affects a business and all of the marketing, advertising, whatever else that they have, uh.
Do they know that this is something?
So at Brayscales, Cooper is here tonight, um, Jake notified Brayscales of his change, uh, so they can provide their input, that it does affect them. Um, like I said, in the future, if the city decides to change the proportions, um, the front road on Tyrrell fourteen, we're gonna have to manage it, both top one and two. And this is kind of a, a policy decision for the council, but.
Is there, is there a reason of Industrial Drive not looped all the way around?
Yes, Steve.
I've already had some issues with the city responders went to the one side of it.
Is it because the numbers are the same on both sides?
No, it's just Industrial Drive is always been known to be the northwest.
Okay.
Or maybe the east-west, and frontage roads are a lot of times named off the frontage road over that confusion.
So in talking with Jake, the properties for the, on the west side, sort of been addressed off of Tyrrell seventeen. The county addressed them by calling them Industrial Drive. That it's not a necessary change, but it's being presented, it was requested from E A D Holdings, so presenting it to you guys.
Have you, have you agreed when communicated with the property owners that everyone's being heard of this stuff? But anyone's being chaired in that extent?
Not at all. City did, it's part of it, reaching out, having that conversation.
We, we don't know if they've had the conversation with that. So there might be a link that they're that part of it, uh, from the city side. When we had the request, we reached conversation between E A D and Brayscales. Uh, however, then we also took upon ourselves from the staff, the intel to make sure that Brayscales was communicated with, so that's why we're here tonight, instead of a couple weeks ago on this, but we'll make sure that Brayscales, and save the impact that they're we knew that they were engaged, but, uh, that's really another presentation. It's outside.
Cooper, why don't you go ahead and just kind of update us on where you're at with those? Well, tools are getting done.
Jake said it's not a necessary change, that it's just a cleanup type issue.
Yeah.
So it's kind of, it's, it's, we can't decide how you guys want to proceed with this. Um, like I said, it's, it's a cleanup issue. The one that I'm possibly more concerned about is the one on the south side. And that, that was not being changed, I don't know why it wouldn't be, it's gonna change though.
Landscaping company or cabinet company?
Oh, well, that, that, that's a big sense of the building right there.
It's two right here, so it impacts three lots, we look at, uh, clear workhouse and cabinets, land estate companies, or there's some of that.
I was gonna say, didn't, didn't we reapprove two other buildings?
The county said they did that, oh, cause at the time, the front end road didn't extend past that, that's what they felt Industrial Drive named where they did.
Yeah, I'm already in here on, on behalf of you know, this came up in conversation, we were jumping into the position to have a conversation with the city. And I think the tire team that they're in, and and this is a goofy situation, you got three roads with the same name, and it's only gonna get worse, not get better. And in that conversation, we talked about that west road being renamed. Uh, and so trying, trying to resolve that. I think Cooper's been after this, but he brought up maybe calling it, uh, Industrial Drive North, South and West, I'm not sure if that's called it. Um, I, there's, again, this isn't a big, strong push, it's not something that's absolutely being demanded, it's just something we should get done in, in an effort to work with, the city's admitted the request, uh, on Kelly's behalf to get this done, and, and you know, the name doesn't, you're running that, uh, the ground for it, or something. Kelly said if you were gonna change one, maybe you could do that. His family owns some stuff on that north loop, and wouldn't have any agreement if you renamed it that way, but something should be done, this is the minus.
So let me ask this then. Steve, if we were looking at that, what you just mentioned about northwest, south, whatever, you know, just keep the name, but would that solve some of this issue? Without having to give it a complete new name?
What I'm hearing is, for example, we already had, uh, and we didn't have the issue this time, but we had a street stroke incident on the north one. They were responding to the dark one. We had a very, very ugly industrial asset on the south one. And just because somebody mentioned the business, we knew where to go. Ambulance crew went to the north one.
You guys don't go by like numbers of the building, like?
So they went to the north side.
I know, but they're, they don't have, like, most houses or buildings have like three oh six third street.
When you're responding, you first focus on the street. Then you get all into the address when you're responding.
I'm just wondering if that, as opposed to having to rename it, cause again, there's.
Versus the south end.
Yeah.
It, it, it's just an issue that needs to be resolved, cause there shouldn't be.
No, I agree. I just Cooper, I get where you're coming from too, is you have to redo everything. I understand, and that's not cheap. So I'm trying to figure out here is if we compromise on something like that, is that gonna cause angst, or is that something, I mean, cause then you'd have a chance to bleed that in over time, as opposed to having to redo everything now. Right. Okay. I don't wanna cause Steve heartburn here either a lot, but I mean, if that's something that we could live with, that I mean, that helps you a little bit, we're not sitting, you don't have to sit and incur a huge upfront cost, or you can bleed that in. I can keep ambulance tribe hopefully going to the right location, if we can get the GPS squared away, and I know that won't happen overnight either, so.
I mean, I like the idea that we mentioned about having like the three different, like just the industrial drive, the north drive, and then the south, you know what I mean, like then you should be able to differentiate, well, industrial drive is just industrial drive. The north is the north, the south is the south, I feel like that would be an easier, an easier fix in my opinion.
Would it be easier, or would you want west on there, just for a denomination?
We're gonna leave on the north-south ones, yeah, cleaning them on left.
Yeah.
And all that area is gonna grow.
Yeah.
They're gonna have more businesses there. And sadly, people don't know where they are religion.
Understand that. It's just, I don't wanna needlessly burden a business owner on something with this.
Said your industrial drive and change this one. Visto and both of those, they want the name to be.
Just keep. Okay. Steve?
I, I have no problem with that, because right now, if you go all the way to the bench, uh, that's not being called Industrial Drive too. There's a lot of properties that are being built out.
Yep.
Now's the time to do it, it's a good one. But I, I don't wanna sound like I'm talking on both sides in my face, but I'm looking at this one to bring up a pretty significant point with the ability to respond appropriately and say, he is my number one. So, um, I, I like the proposed compromise, but I fear that like Steve says, when you have people working in that area, that you're not gonna differentiate north, south, west. He's gonna say, I'm on Industrial Drive somewhere, and then first response, I'm gonna have to crack through that thing, and if you've ever driven that, it takes a while to get home. And minutes mean everything, so um, I do like the idea of potentially keeping the west side. How do you feel about that? Mr. Lawrence?
I think anything you clearly want to do will lead to profit.
Well, that would lead to your cost concerns on behalf of Brayscales, and would that Lucas create difficulty with other businesses on the north side?
If you shifted the northwest and south?
No. If we left Industrial Drive on the west side and then changed the name on the road running east and west.
Right here?
Yes, and then the name on the road running east and west on the south, so the north and the south lanes. And then obviously, there would be a, I am not, I can't really figure what that far line is on the east. Just can't make sure that I'm looking at it correctly.
So if you go this north section right here?
Yeah.
This aerial doesn't really reflect what's truly there.
Mm-hmm.
But you have, and they built that though, the shops in Brookstone, you have quite a few already built in here, and Benson's in here. You have another building right here, and Visto's, another one right here. Another one, I believe here, and you have the vet show over here. So there, this would impact quite a few.
So it impacts more?
Yeah, this impacts quite a few.
But do those businesses have like advertising with their address or business cards or?
There's a variety of different things, you have like A D P, like a medical device company here. The vet show's under construction right now. And just variety, plus you have, I don't know if this one's addressed off, but I think it's off in, it's east-west though. So there, it doesn't have quite the different ones, so.
We need to do something about this before that whole area gets developed, and that's otherwise you're gonna impact a lot more people.
Stephanie, what's your thoughts on this one?
I guess I hate to see the impact on the business owner too. But when I hear that there are even more businesses on the other side, if there, if there was a way that we could that he could be worked with where it wouldn't cost. I mean, I recognize there's two things, there's cost and there's hassle too, I'm sure. To, to a change, but, um, I probably think going forward, it'd be difficult to leave them all Industrial Drive. Considering there'll just be more growth out there. I guess I'm torn.
Steve, if you were in a perfect world and you could sit and wave a magic wand, what would you wanna do here? Give all three different names?
We could trade fire responder. I'm more worried about ambulance crews. Cause they, all they do is they punch it into their computer on the dispatch side. And they're blindly driving through that. And to add to confusion, there's also other little pockets called Visto too. It's a time to call, and then run Visto development. And we had one where the old one, almost sixty-four.
Right, so I mean, I'm looking at this, trying to figure out how we'd be the least impactful, but yet have the safety factor.
Now, you could probably call it a loop, but then we then it implies that it's a loop.
Right.
I've seen that done in other large cities too. Industrial loop.
Right.
But then you gotta make sure they all have different numbers.
Yeah, and we have to take the, uh, we have to realize too, that this is impactful financially to the different businesses out there, if we do do a complete name change, cause they will have to go through a whole rebranding situation by adding in that street address. That's not cheap. There'll be multiple businesses that will have to go through that process.
Is it maybe something you should think about a little bit longer? Think about what other option there might be?
What we could do for we could have a conversation with a couple properties that you impacted down here. Yeah, I'm gonna, I, I don't, I leave the cabin job is up and down, you know? Yeah, but we check with those couple properties, so you can, yeah, get to do the three scale. And just follow up the council on it there.
Cooper.
Jay's particular bond, we're reporting, address off of a hundred, something, hundred fourteen, and that extension would be front end road.
And that could be worth it, clean up that, maybe, yeah. And then we could see perhaps we'd come out with a suggestion, or do the board council consider it?
Well, it'd be nice to, to see if the businesses of two would have some consensus, if they'd be okay with that or where we're at, cause Cooper, if you're gonna take a shot in the dark, how much would it cost you to put, re-up all your letterhead, the business cards and redo all the signage and yada, 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 any idea? Yep. Okay, I just, yep. Yep, that's a yeah. No, all right. That's kind of what I was figuring too, I just was you had an idea, cause it's not just gonna be you then, if we go through and do all this, everybody's gonna get involved with that process, and I know that's not an easy thing to do, so. All right. So here's what I'm thinking we do, guys, let's, let's put, let's table this, let's let the city have a little bit more conversation with the business owners. Cooper and whoever else is gonna get involved in this. And let's get an idea what they would be okay with, cause we are gonna have to do something here. And we also have to keep in mind that we had the safety aspect with this as well. Okay?
And ever if you consider Irwin in the future, if there was one, otherwise, you know, I think the process was for requests, like this, if you're asked, and then they reply to you.
Yeah, oh, that's fine. And then we keep Steve in the loop here too, so if we, you know, on this, as to what would be what would be acceptable and what's not, so I wanna make sure everybody's in on the, in on the game here. So why don't we do that, let's just table this for a couple weeks, and, and let's, uh, let's let the city get involved with this, and let's come back in two weeks and have another discussion about this, and see what you guys landed on, okay? Guys, all right with that?
Yeah, I, I can see how confusing it could be. Yeah, I, I can see how confusing it is to do, yes.
Okay, thank you guys for the input on that too, and like I said, we'll have our, our guys, we'll have my people get ahold of you people, how's that? Yep. All right, Jim, you got nine?
Just, just, I haven't even Brian, we're gonna stop. Brad, you know, food, but it has a dance for the goal. Back over the project team, Brian, just want to do a public comment, we thought it was a topic of the city. Um although we asked before tonight, you know, for approval of the debt, finding specifications, doing, directing the other to advertise for bids. Um as you are, whenever you are still working, if you'll answer on security regularly with that. The uh, here we're supposed to find, uh, we're rewarded, uh, proof today. Maybe advertising paper on the first day, the fifteenth, the middle of the year, the seventh, third, so it's only one third here. A lot of sensitive schedule, I know, we have to do this anymore, to have that wrapped up, you know, for like lunch, so it would fall in line with, with this schedule, so um our request is to do, do define that and uh that job and to drop that job to the city. At the time, um I would ask if you have a, if you see on that, it's the, there's a couple of things came up today, a couple of words, um, extended front of that I'd like. Um, I continue to see upon those people. There was, there was a, just a, wanted to show the end of it too. I would do pretty good. Pretty, and I'm gonna say no. But I don't want to worry, we will be, kind of, like.
No, yeah, I gotta get this out.
Um, this is fourteen foot, two, two forty foot driving lanes, outside walking, north side should, that's on south side. Uh, you know, stretch, so do it as a third of this I have never, and um pretty much, there's nobody, it's all of it.
Like I said, we've been down this road numerous times, but has anybody got any other questions, concerns on this one? If not, I'm gonna look for a motion to approve the plans and specifications as they are presented. With pub, you want that one to be with public works approval?
Yeah.
Contingent, okay.
All motion.
Okay. Stephanie makes a motion, can I get a second? Okay, there'll be a second, all in favor, say aye. Okay, that's everybody, let's go to B, direct the auditor to advertise for bids. Get a motion to accept that.
Sure.
Yeah, he only makes a motion to direct the auditor to advertise for bids, can I get a second?
Stephanie, I'm reading some of these others are dated today, so I'd rather to make sure I have all of them.
Yeah.
Kind of painful.
Okay, Sarah does a second, um, okay, all in favor, say aye. Okay, so everybody, all right, motion carries. All right, Jim, what about the rest of this stuff going on? What? I think I'm gonna mark that on here as a first, I'm pretty sure. No, that's fine, I'm just having fun with you here.
I know.
What about him, Brandon? Go ahead.
I'll bring it up.
You go.
Two items, one, look there about bills. Uh, two bills that were shot down last week in the house, thirteen twenty-eight, thirteen thirty. Uh, did not pass through the house, which is good. Uh, thirteen twenty-eight, when it's based in the mid, where like a a mobile home park, a trailer park, would be treated as a one parcel. You can do it per like units, so we had to go with courts and town. They would have been identified as individual parcel, you wouldn't be able to break out how many units and stuff like that, so uh, that would really impact a course on our, those station project that will be going through a special assessment on here this year. Um, that one failed at the house level, um, also thirteen thirty. Basically, um it, where you go, it's based on directly their area, it really diluted the uh, abilities of cities and the special assessment commissions. They have some, had some force and other needs in that fashion, so that bill failed awesome. So very high level, that's what. That's all I got.
That's it?
Well, I'll keep it short.
All right. Port, portfolio reports, uh, me had a trip out to Bismarck here last Thursday and Friday with the Fargo-Moorhead Chamber. There was about forty-five of us that went, um, business, business executives and then the three mayors were out there on this one too. Uh, had a chance to meet with uh our, our legislative group and a bunch of other legislators from across the state, which was good. Um, had breakfast with the governor on Friday morning, it was kind of fun, got the, a bunch of us got to sit down and have a chat with him. Um, kind of give him a lay of the land of what's going on in Horace. Talked about that water or the sewer project that we have upcoming at some point here, like to get a cost share going on that. Um, so just kind of got into people's ear, we also talked about the daycare issue. Um, I explained that survey that we had taken uh to him, to the governor, um, told him that, you know, if, if I've got fifty percent of the people in town here having to switch careers because of daycare problems, there's your workforce issues, so pay attention. Um, they also, and I talked to Judy Lee and other people on this daycare issue, it looks like there's some bills that will probably make it through this year. Uh, which will be good, it doesn't solve the problem, but it helps nip away at it. This has been a pro- problem for probably fifty, sixty years, it's not gonna happen overnight, but they're on the right path, so. Um, anyway, we'll have some more follow-up with that, I'm probably gonna wind up out in Bismarck again, but at least that was a good, good trip and a lot of good conversations, so. That's what I got, Sarah, what do you got?
Uh huh, we had some bid openings, uh, later in the first. It was a party, um, also had some follow-up meetings for that, so looking to be a very, very busy time, um, adding Wall Avenue and that potential on top of it is going to be good. Very busy since in fact it was, but um, that's all I have at this point, had shuttle meetings, some of those residents. Uh, some commercials that are sort of potentially looking at Horace, which is good. Well, what's up?
It sounds good, Elmer, what do you got?
Not really a whole lot, I've been going through the new ornaments days. Handbook that Chase gave me about this fix. Um, I think the rest of the side is gonna get copied soon. Um, and request, I also requested that we meet with the council with the commissioners for the planning and building. Um, just so that we can all just hash everything out together and kind of go over things together, and Jay thought that was a good idea, so um, we will be doing like a special meeting at some point for that. Um, we're supposed to have a dinner, lunch, um, team's meeting. To over a few things with Chase, but I got pulled into a meeting at work, so I was unable to, to do that, but we have one scheduled for next week. I, or either this Thursday or next Thursday, uh, I better check on that, so.
Sure.
It better be this Thursday, because I think then gone next week, I'm leaving, so, we see them, yes, enjoy, mhm.
All right, Stephanie, what do you got?
Um, we just continue work on the Horace one hundred and fiftieth, four-day event, that's been a lot of work and I think we're making good progress on our events, so that's it.
Yeah, sounds good, so, next order of business here is we're going into executive session, so I'll read this off, uh, executive session held pursuant to N D C C four four dash oh four dash nineteen point one. Uh, to discuss negotiating strategy or provide negotiating instructions to our attorney and other negotiator regarding contracts for the purchase of real property related to the Wall Avenue project. We'll take five minutes here, guys, we'll have to clear the room and then we'll do our executive session and we'll come back after we're done with that. Oh, somebody's gotta make a motion, somebody's gonna make a motion?
Oh, I'll make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and go into executive session.
Yeah, Sarah does a second, all in favor, say aye, all right, there we go, just wait.